Ladies and gentlemen, town clerk has indicated that according to being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for reserve upon the completion or dissolve of the special town meeting. Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no. It's unanimous. Just so you'll know, that's the procedure we use so that we can run the special meeting, and as soon as the special meeting is concluded, we can go right into the annual meeting without waiting for a specific time. So, at this point, I would like to open the special meeting. Before I do, I would like to have a few introductions. I know we have some people involved, particularly those in front of me, so I would like to ask respective committees, and I'll start with the finance committee. If you would please introduce your members to the audience.
Good evening. My name is Nick Adalablas. Tonight we have Sarah-
Mike's not on here. They're going to talk right into it.
Good evening. My name is Nick Adalablas. Tonight we have Sarah Sansom, who is the vice chair, Michael Finlemore, and Laura Dack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And from the school committee, Chairman Hearn.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hearn. I am the chairman of the committee. Brian Schenver, vice chair for this evening, as well as Kathy Navarada and Sheila Wood.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, for the board of selectmen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Jolda, chairman of the board of selectmen. With us this evening is vice chairman Randy Becker, board members Don Borg from the board and the district articles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And our town administrator.
Hi, I'm Doug Willerson. I'd also like to quickly introduce some of our department heads, the ones that are new within the past year. So we have Tim Bell as our town accountant. We have Tina Landry as our treasure collector, and we have Police Chief Mike Shaw. And I think that's all. We have newer ones. A few other guys from the town.
Thank you, Mr. Willerson. On stage here, we have our town clerk, Mr. Bob Craver, and our town council representing us tonight, Mr. Bill Ewing. Also in present tonight is our deputy moderator, Mr. Mike McCarron, who will be called upon when necessary. Thank you all for coming. My name is Ted Avalas. Proud to serve you as town moderator for tonight's meeting. When addressing the meeting, I ask that you please address the moderator. It's protocol. Miss the moderator is the appropriate request, and I will certainly address you and allow you to speak. Even questions or any comments that you wish to make should come directly through the moderator, so I ask that you please uphold to that protocol. When doing so, I ask that you please use the microphones. We've got a microphone in each of the aisles for anyone who wants to make a comment or ask a question. Please use those microphones. There are microphones at each of the tables for the committees. Those microphones are reserved for the chairman of each of the committee, or they're designated, should they want someone to speak, on behalf of the committee, representing a committee idea. I ask that anyone on the committees who is looking to speak as a private citizen, to please use the microphones in the aisle so as not to cause any confusion with the audience. And then one last piece of business is our electronic voting. As you know, you each have an electronic voting clicker. One for yes, two for no. It will be used for each of the articles here tonight. Mr. Willerson, I believe we have a sample, so you can test it.
Yeah, so it does take a second for it to start recommending responses.
Okay, so, um... Well, a question on whether or not the Boston Bruins are going to win the Stanley Cup this year. So I would ask you to press 1, or A for yes, or B for no. Okay, voting is closed. I agree. Eighty-three percent in the affirmative, seventeen percent in the negative. All right, now before we get started, I would like, uh, I would like to ask if Mrs. Santos and Mr. Gabor will please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America, and the republic which stands one nation under God, and the universal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the special town meeting now opened. I would ask the clerk, please read the warrant.
Hey, you can hear me out there?
Yeah.
In the name of the Colonel of the messages that you are hereby required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West of Four Seven, who are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in Montlet High School auditorium, 52 Lake Parkway, in San-
Motion in suspense with the reading of the warrant.
Thank you, clerk.
We have a motion in the second in suspense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no. It's unanimous, huh? Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury as sufficient for the town administrator's unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $7,427.04 to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the payment of prior year bills as follows. $92.31 from the treasure collector other expenses account, $7.42 from the IT computer maintenance account, $368.98 from the clerk's office supplies account, $168.55 from the highway office supplies account, $1,755 from the police vehicle maintenance account, $4,949 from the court enforcement clerk wages account, and $85.78 from the board of office supplies.
We have a motion in the second. The board of selectmen, Mr. Chairman, does the board have a recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
And from the fin com, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, that being said, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor of article one, please press yes. All those opposed, please press no. Okay. One A. Thank you. Okay, voting closed. The vote is ninety-one percent yes. Can we get a number on that? Ninety-seven to ten. The motion passes. Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury as sufficient for the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $48.15 to the sewer unpaid bills account from the sewer office supplies account for the payment of prior year bills.
Motion made in seconded. Would selectmen have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, board of selection recommends approval.
And finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Know that this is a nine-tenths vote for approval. The voting machine will now be opened. One A, approve. Two B, to oppose. Okay, voting is closed. The results, ninety-three percent for, seven percent opposed, one oh three to eight. The article passes. Article three. Motion to suspense with the reading of the warrant article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no. The motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over this article. There are no prior year bills in the water account.
Motion made in seconded. For purposes of the means, we will say all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no. The ayes have the unanimous. Pass over for more. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from any available funds in the treasury as some sufficient for the DPW snow and ice supplies account or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $36,000 from the DPW building improvements line and appropriate $100,000 for free cash to the snow and ice removal budget as follows. $16,389.62 to the snow removal overtime budget, $68,574.41 to the snow removal contracts budget, and $51,035.97 to the snow and ice supplies budget.
Motion made in second. Board of selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article four, please press one A. All those opposed, please press two B. Voting is over. We'll close the voting. Post the results. Eighty-six percent yes, ninety-five yes, sixteen no. The article, the motion is passed. Article five. To see if the town will vote to rescind the authorized but unissued balances of various borrowing authorizations approved by the town from time to time, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of completing the projects for which they were originally approved or take any action relative thereto. And then we have a list of several articles with their dates of authorizations and their amounts with the amount to rescind.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in seconded. Does the board of selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion on article five? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article five, please press one A. Those opposed, please press two B. Voting is now closed. Post the results. In the affirmative, we have one hundred and one. And nine no. The motion is passed. Article six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the following surplus fund balances in the amount of $52,303.04. There is a description and available amount for the fund of the sale of land along with a description and the fund of the deficits, all provided in your guide.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in seconded. Would selectmen recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article six, please press one A. All those opposed, please press two B. Voting is closed. Post the results. Eighty-seven in the affirmative, thirteen in the negative. Vote is eighty-nine to thirteen. Article passes. Article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the following surplus fund balances in the amount of $33,099.08. We have a list of four funds with a description and the available funds to fund the renovation of town hall from the town hall capital improvement fund, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in seconded. Would selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Although we wish to have a discussion on article seven. Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article seven, press one A. Those opposed, press two B. Voting now closed. We'll post the results. Eighty-two percent in the affirmative. Total is one hundred and two to nine. The article passes. Article eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the inspections revolving fund, $4,512.17 for the Southwest County Communications Center for a true payment or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in second. Would selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article eight, please press one A. Those opposed, please press two B. Voting is closed. We'll post the results. Ninety-nine in the affirmative, fifteen in the negative. Article passes. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury as some sufficient for the purpose of funding capital purchases and projects as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof. And the warrant, we have a list of departments, the projects, and the amounts.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash $223,899.08 upon the capital purchases presented.
Motion made in seconded. Does it recommendation from the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen recommends approval.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Open for discussion. Yes. You might have to talk royally to us. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Diana Ndeel from School Street. I had asked Doug earlier about the replacement trucks for the DPW, and he had mentioned a train in. Is this amount that you're asking for net of the train in? Or if not, where will the train in money go when we get that?
It's net of the train in. Yeah, it is net of the train in, right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article nine, please press one A. Those opposed, press two B.
Sorry, one second. I was daydreaming, so we're gonna start. It's now open.
Now open, thank you. Okay, voting is closed. We'll post the results. For article nine, eighty-six in the affirmative. Eighteen in the negative. The article passes. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Fund 3605 on RRA $117,917.12 for the purpose of funding highway replacement vehicles as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof. And there is a list of vehicles being requested in the article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve as presented on the screen or as presented in the town meeting guide.
Motion made in second. Would selectmen recommendation?
The board of selectmen recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of article ten, please press one A. All those opposed, please press two B. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. In the affirmative, we have eighty-eight and a negative twenty. The article passes. Sorry, we need a percentage. Thank you. This is a two-thirds vote required. Thank you. Eighty-one percent in the affirmative, nineteen in the negative. Thank you. Article eleven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the following surplus fund balances, $34,790 to fund a deficit in DDP grant drinking water project fund or take any action thereof. And there is a description of a couple of funds there in the article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Would selectmen recommendation?
Board of selection recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article eleven, press one A. Opposed, two B. Voting closed. We'll post the results. We have ninety-one yes and twenty no. The article passes. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from water other expenses, $1,270.42 to fund a deficit in the water extra detail account or take any action thereof.
So, Mr. Moderator, this is slightly different, but I move that the town vote to appropriate from the water other expenses line, $1,270.42 to fund a deficit in the water extra detail account.
Motion made in seconded. Selectmen recommendation?
The board of selectmen recommends approval.
And finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Open it up for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, can I amend my motion? I meant to say the water purchase of services account, not the other expenses account.
Motion made in seconded to amend. We'll put that to a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll vote now on the main article. One A for yes, two B for no.
I was daydreaming this morning.
Voting now closed. We'll post the results. Eighty-three yes, twelve no. The article passes. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the following surplus fund balances, $13,219.44 to fund water distribution improvements, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof. And then there are several funds with a description and the available balances.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in second. Would selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends approval.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this will take a two-thirds vote for approval. We'll open the voting. One A for yes, two B for no. Voting now closed. We'll post the results. Ninety-five yes, sixteen no. And we have a percentage, Mr. Town Administrator, for the record. Eighty-six percent. The article passes. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from sewer retained earnings, $192,981 to fund an infiltration and inflow program as required by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in second. Selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion.
So, Mr. Moderator, since we're spending almost $1,000, I'll say a few words on this one. So, the Mass DPD requires us to have both an infiltration inflow analysis, which we completed in last August, and then we have to have an infiltration and an inflow program. So what infiltration inflow is, is infiltration would be when water comes into our sewer lines through groundwater or other sources through the lines. Inflow is when we have lines that are directly tied into our sewer system. So that's some problems. If you have a big flow, it might overrun the system and cause serious problems there. So what we're presenting is $192,000 to study this, analyze it. They'll give us a recommendation on what lines need to be replaced or repaired that we go forward. Any questions?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article fourteen, press one A. Those opposed, two B. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. Ninety-three yes, sixteen no. The article passes. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the following surplus fund balances, $24,818.74 to fund a deficit in the water wastewater treatment facility phase two project, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action thereof. Thereon. And then there are the list of funds with a description and available balances.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in seconded. Selectmen recommendation?
The board of selectmen recommends approval.
Finance committee?
The finance committee recommends approval. The Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion. Every none will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Fifteen, press one A. Those opposed, two B. And then, I'm sorry, it is a two-thirds vote. Thank you for approval. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. Ninety-six, yes. Sixteen, no. Eighty-six percent. The article is approved. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from sewer retained earnings six hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to fund a deficit in the wastewater treatment facility phase-two project, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in second. Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, briefly, this is a project that was completed several years ago in two thousand fourteen. Uh, so at the time, this amount was never borrowed before, so rather than borrow, at this time, we have enough in retained earnings, so we'll pay for it through that.
Any other discussion? Every none will put Article Sixteen to a vote. This is a two-thirds required. The article passes. Those voting yes, press one A. Those no, two B. Voting now closed. We'll post the results. One oh two, yes. Fifteen, no. Eighty-seven percent. The article passes. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the PEG Access Fund, sum sufficient for the purpose of funding the PEG Access capital purchases projects as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from PEG Access Fund three seven oh two one hundred and six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars for the purpose of funding the PEG Access capital purchases projects as listed in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto. First, an update to PEG digital bolts and board hardware and software, eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Second, add a digital display and controls to the town hall rotunda, fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. And third, upgrade digital display capabilities in the selectmen room, seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Motion made in seconded. Selectmen have recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
And we'll open it up for discussion. Every none will put it to a vote, Article Seventeen. All those in favor, press one A. Those opposed, two B. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. Eighty-seven, yes. Twenty-six, no. The article passes. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board's selection.
Second.
Motion made in second to dispense with the reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made in second. Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
And we'll open it up for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to explain real briefly. Uh, so this has several portions. Uh, the first one is, uh, we'll talk about Exhibit A. This is the portion behind the deterrent Mopri and the party planner area that we're here. So it's asking for, uh, the ability to meet with those property owners and rearrange, uh, and the easements to realign Davis Drive to the more and better bar road. Uh, the second one, Exhibit B, uh, this is for easements, uh, from Peter Street uh, up to where Mama's Kitchen parking lot area is, so that would extend the Riverwalk Trail in that area. Exhibit C is the area right behind where the brewery is, where the Riverwalk is already completed. And Exhibit D is the actual Friends River Park area. So we have these maps. Uh, they're in the packet, but, uh, the printing didn't come out too well. Uh, so this is, again, Exhibit A with Davis Street, uh, with the Mopri building and their annex and the parking lot that's right there. And then we have, here is, uh, from Peter Street up to the Mama's Kitchen parking lot. And this area is right behind the brewery. And last of all, is the actual Friends River Park in this lot right here. Uh, any questions on any of those? Just to specify, it's, this will allow the Board of Selectmen to return to, uh, any easements or properties.
Any discussion? Questions for the town administration. Every none will put it to a vote. This requires two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor of Article Eighteen, press one A. Those opposed, two B.
Sorry, down your vote.
Voting is closed. We'll post the results. Ninety-eight, yes. Fifteen, no. Eighty-seven percent. The article passes. Motion to dissolve the special meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. And just take a, uh, two-minute recess for the town. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open the annual town meeting. Town Clerk will read one.
In the name of the government of Massachusetts, you are hereby required and directed to notify the
Motion asked us what the reading of the board was.
Second.
Motion made in second to dispense with the reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Vote. Motion is approved. Article One. Report, uh, I'm sorry. To hear and act upon the report recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, or take any action thereon.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move we, that the town vote to approve the article as read. Do you know the Finance Committee has to approve the article?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to update, uh, page two of the finance, uh, report, um, concerning free cash. Um, based on the special town meeting, there was, uh, a hundred thousand dollars spent in Article Four for the, um, snow ice. And then Article Eight, there was additional four thousand five hundred and twelve dollars spent, which will, uh, leave us with approximately twenty thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, at the end of the meeting, if Article Six is also approved. Thank you.
So, does the Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And Finance Committee?
Finance, Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion.
Uh, sorry, just to clarify, Article Eight, um, the special, didn't actually use free cash, uh, so. Uh, no, so that's actually going to come from the inspections revolving month, so there will be that forty-five hundred dollars from the free cash, so there will be the twenty-five thousand dollars, so, sorry.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I had a question on several of the salary line items in the budget. Is that okay to ask questions on that note?
Uh, probably more appropriate to ask than than Article Two.
We're still on Article One, sir. Thank you. Yes.
So, is Article Eight, that was forty-five hundred dollars to fund the, uh, communications center. Yeah. Right, yeah, it did come from free cash, so that was.
Okay. Can we address a question so everyone can?
Yeah.
Was it, was it not previously certified as free cash?
Uh, right, so it was the, basically the fund balance of that department, yes, every year. So I didn't fund it from free cash, just because I wanted to keep four thousand dollars more free cash to be there.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article One? Every none will open up the vote. All those in favor, round over one. Press one A. Those opposed, two B.
Mr. Moderator, while people are voting, I failed to mention that, uh, a longtime Finance Committee member, Neil Dixon, uh, resigned. He moved out of state, uh, over the, a couple of months ago, so we, uh, he was very helpful and we appreciated his service to the town of Western.
Thank you. Voting is now closed. We'll post the results. Eighty-eight, yes. Sixteen, no. Article One passes. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of elected officials, provide for a reserve fund, and determine the sum of money the town will raise and appropriate, including appropriations from any available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, before I make a motion, I just wanted to let everyone know that a copy of the line item budget has been provided. I was out on the table, and it says at the bottom that it's the Finance Committee report and the municipal budget. Uh, so I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, an amount sufficient to fix the compensation of elected officials, provide for a reserve fund, and to defray the charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the fiscal year beginning July first, uh, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Said sum to be raised as follows. Transfer from Waterway Improvement Fund, fifteen thousand. Donation from Fellas Foundation for Police Station, two hundred thousand. Donation from Friends of the Library, fifty thousand. Proceeds from self-delivered building, forty-five thousand. Uh, Title Five account, four thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, Southern Worcester County Communications Center. Uh, debt-related direct cost, seventy-five thousand eighty-six dollars. Water indirect cost, three hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Sewer indirect cost, six hundred and forty-seven thousand eighteen dollars. And property tax and other revenues, forty-six million four hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Motion made in seconded. Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, Diane Nettie. I just had a question on the three salaries for the chief assessor, treasurer, and town clerk. I noticed that there were some substantial increases in those. Also, so I was wondering why, and also wanted to know whether those three department heads are working the same hours as each other, and if they are, well, how many hours are each of those department heads working? I'd be curious about that. Thank you.
So, uh, town assessor, so the town assessor, the, uh, budgeted salary, seventy thousand dollars. So previously, this was an elected position, and the hours were, uh, thirty-one and a half hours per week. Uh, this is no longer elected, it is appointed, so it's, uh, forty hours per week, and seventy thousand dollars is the, uh, that's probably actually the low end of the range for appointed assessors. Uh, the treasurer collector, uh, the posted salary, budgeted salary, seventy thousand dollars for that position as well. Uh, this position was, uh, combined last year as a treasurer collector, and again, this is a position that, uh, for forty hours per week. And your last one is town clerk, right? Uh, so that is budgeted at, uh, sixty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, this position is still elected, it works thirty-five hours.
Any other discussion?
Tim Bell, the town accountant, uh, I'd like to amend the motion that was made and insert for the annual omnibus budget after the amount of forty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Could you repeat that one more time, the amount?
The motion is changing the amount in the article. It's just after forty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, insert for the annual omnibus budget.
So, I believe that's how it's presented in the town meeting guide, it just wasn't written that way in the PowerPoint.
The motion in second on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now we'll vote on the article unless there is any other discussion. All those in favor of Article Two, please vote one A. Opposed, two B. Voting is closed. We'll post the results. Eighty-nine, yes. Twenty-seven, no. The article passes. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds a sum sufficient to operate the Sewer Enterprises Fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, or take any action thereon.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, an amount sufficient to operate the Sewer Enterprises Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Said sum to be raised as follows. User charges and other department receipts, three million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Motion made in seconded. Board of Selectmen have recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
And we'll open it up for discussion.
Tim Bell, town accountant. I'd like to amend the motion that said after operating Sewer Enterprises Fund, insert for the annual omnibus budget.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
It's good that we have a vote.
Okay.
Oh, I was just gonna thank Tim for keeping me in line.
Any other discussion? Every none will put Article Three to a vote. All those in favor, press one A. Those opposed, two B. Voting is closed. We'll post the results. Ninety, yes. Twenty-four, no. The article passes. The article passes. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from any available funds a sum sufficient to operate the Water Enterprises Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, or take any action thereon.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, an amount sufficient to operate the Water Enterprises Fund for the annual omnibus budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. Said sum to be raised as follows. User charges and other department receipts, two million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Very none will put Article 4 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. Voting is closed, we'll post the results. Eighty-six, yes. Sixteen, no. Article passes. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer, with the consent of the Board of Selectmen, to temporarily borrow a note or notes or make an inter-fund advance from available funds in anticipation of revenue from taxation, bonds, or grants, and to repay said sums within the current fiscal year, or take any action thereon.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Town, Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
And we'll open it up for discussion. Very none will put this to a vote, this will take a two-thirds vote for approval. Press 1A for yes, 2B for no. Close the voting, post the results. Ninety-two, yes. Twenty-four, no. The article passes. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer for any available funds in the treasury or certain sum to the Stabilization Fund, or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the Stabilization Fund.
Motion made and seconded. Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion. Very none will put Article 6 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 6, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. We'll close the voting, post the results. One hundred and two, yes. Nineteen, no. The article passes. Article 7. Motion to the dispenser for reading and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented. One note that it's different than the guide, I had the phone number wrong here, it's actually three-five-one-six, and the guide is three-seven-three-six.
Motion made and seconded. With the one correction. Any other discussion?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee?
Recommends approval.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, very none will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 7, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. Voting is closed, we'll post the results. Eighty-six, yes. Thirteen, no. The article passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to declare the below-listed votes from the Police Department as surplus, or take any action thereon. And there is a list of three water craft with trailers and engines.
I move that the town vote to declare the following surplus and appropriate the proceeds for the purchase of two replacement police boats and accessories. Again, the, the boats are listed with their motors and treasures.
Motion made and seconded. Would Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion. Very none will put it to a vote, Article 8. Those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, 2B.
Sorry, it's still, okay, now it's open.
Now open. Okay, voting now closed, we'll post the results. Ninety-five, yes. Twenty-one, no. Article passes. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to grant a preservation restriction to the Massachusetts Historical Commission in perpetuity on a structure generally known and referred to as the Webster Town Hall, located at 350 Main Street, Webster, Massachusetts, Asses apostle 10, 1-L, 1-0, or take any action thereon.
I move that the town vote to approve as presented. Quick note, I added the book and page number of the article.
Motion made and seconded. Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion. Very none will put Article 9 to a vote. Those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, press 2B. Voting is closed, we'll post the results. One oh-three, yes. Sixteen, no. The article passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to accept any provisions.
Sir.
Motion made at the dispenser for the reading of the article, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Would the Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any other discussion?
Is that a tax on hotels or something?
It is, yes. So Articles 10, 11, and 12 are related. Article 10 is the local option tax on, uh, lodging, so it's a hotel tax at six percent. Articles 11 and 12 are a three percent community impact fee that can be added on top of those. Uh, so 11 is for professionally managed lodging, and Article 12 is for short-term rentals.
Six percent plus three percent, maybe nine percent.
Sir, if you're gonna ask any more questions, I please would ask you to use the microphone. Everyone should want to hear the question.
Six percent plus three percent plus what other percent?
Please use the microphone so everyone can hear, and we can hear the questions.
Six percent plus three percent plus what other percent? How much would it be total?
Uh, it's the six percent plus three percent.
It'll be nine percent on top of your bill when you go to hotel.
Yes. Yeah, you should.
My name is Jeff.
Please, just name an address.
Jeff, from Webster, Queen Street.
Thank you.
So, what would the money be used for?
So the six percent on the local excise, that is a general fund revenue, so we go to the general operating budget. The three percent would go to a community impact fee, so that would have to be used for things that would improve the community. Uh, many communities use this for sidewalks in the area or for parks in the community.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Very none will put Article 10 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. We'll now close the voting. Post the results. Ninety, yes. Thirty-eight, no. Article 10 passes. Article 11. Motion to the dispenser for the reading and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve the article as presented. Would the Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
We'll open it up for discussion.
Now, what, what is this three percent tax? Um, it sound like pure property?
Uh, so this is a, a three percent for, for lodgings that are professionally managed. So if there was a professional hotel, like a hotel chain, that would be additional three percent on top of the six percent that was included in Article 10.
Maybe nine percent, six, three, plus another three.
So, if we're adding six percent? We added six percent with Article 10, now we're adding three percent in Article 11. And that's for professionally managed lodging facilities, so fewer typical hotels.
So like if somebody had a rental property, and they had advertised as such, such and such, would you consider that professional?
So if you were running an Airbnb, something like that, that would be Article 12. So right now, we're on Article 11, which would only be for professionally managed ones.
I mean, you guys should be reading through these so that we know what we're voting on. It seems like you're trying to push them through and ran, ran them down our throats. This is the first chance I've had to look at any of this.
So they've been available on the town website, and, well, I'm happy to discuss them, that's, that's why we're here.
Discuss them, would that, so we more than voted for?
Mr. Moderator. The reason they're not being read is because someone made a motion at the dispenser for the reading. So that's why they're not being read.
Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna ask that you leave the text up on the screen long enough so it can be read. Understood. Thank you. Any other discussion? Very none will vote on Article 11, those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. Voting is open.
Sorry, it's working. Now it's open.
Now. And we'll now close the voting and post the results. Ninety, yes. Thirty-two, no. Article 11 passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to adopt MGL Chapter 64G, Section 3DB, and impose a local option community impact fee of three percent of the rent to each transfer of occupancy on short-term rental units located within a two or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. The fee applies to transfers of occupancies on or after July 1, 2019, for which rental contract was entered into, or after January 1, 2019, or take any action relative thereto.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
This is open for discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that this does not apply to a single family dwelling, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
I was wondering if you have a definition of short-term rental?
Uh, so that's defined in the law. Mr. Hugh? Is the short-term rental defined in the law? I, I believe it's under thirty days, but...
While we wait for that to obtain another question or comment, please identify yourself.
Jim Gaffel, of the Cudapp. How is this moderator?
Yeah. Uh, so each entity that is currently, should be registered with the State Department of Revenue. Uh, so the State Department of Revenue will collect the tax and will remit it back to the town, presumably on a quarterly basis like they do our other taxes.
Here. Any other discussion? We're still checking out.
Andrew Jolda, Love and Arms.
Yes, Mr. Jolda.
Yes, from the, um, Worcester County Selectments Association. The information we received is the local tax for the short-term rentals does not apply under state law to people that have month-to-month rental tenants. It only applies to properties that are operating under Airbnb vacation rentals by owners.
I'll confirm that that's correct.
Understood. The answer for short-term rental is thirty days. Any other discussion? Define whether it's thirty or more, or thirty or less is the question. Thirty or less. Any other discussion? Okay, very none will put Article 12 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A, those opposed, 2B. We'll close the voting.
Uh, sorry, it hasn't.
Whoa.
Now it's open.
I'm jumping ahead now. My apologies. Now. And now we'll close the voting and post the results. Ninety-three, yes. Thirty-eight, no. Article 12 passes. At this time, I am going to step down from the podium for Article 13, as I am a member of the Cable Access Committee. I will ask our Deputy Moderator to please lead, uh, to Article 13. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I'm running off into the voice.
Yes. Okay, Article 13. To create a budget for cable access, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following cable access budget in accordance with the laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 3/4, or take any action thereon. And there are two, uh, items listed, salaries and other things.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented. I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
The article has been, uh, the motion's been made seconded. Recommendation by the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Recommendation by the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? Yeah, Tim Bell, Town Accounting. Yes, sir. Since Mr. Avalas removed himself as moderator for this vote, uh, this, my question is actually to the Town Council for Article 15 of the special town meeting. Should he have removed himself as moderator for that vote as well? And does that cause any issues with our special that's now been closed?
The special is closed, and I leave that to the discretion of the moderators.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, we are now open for a vote. Or open for discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, that we're open for a vote?
Yes, we are.
1A for a yes, 2B for no. And the results? Yes, ninety-seven, no, thirty-two. The article has passed.
Article 14. Motion made a second to dispense with the reading of the article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. The ayes have it. Unanimous vote. Town administration.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented. Real briefly, this just allows us to add...
Motion made a second.
Alright, real brief. Uh, this allows us to add a fine for those who fail to register in our new vacant property bylaw.
Does the Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
And we will open it up for discussion.
Jeff Newmstrom.
Yeah, so last summer, we passed a vacant property bylaw, uh, which requires all properties that are vacant for a certain period of time to register with the town. Uh, and we go and inspect those and make sure that they're properly maintained and, if necessary, awarded up. So if they do not register with the town, all we're doing with this recall is inserting a $300 fine if they don't have registered.
How much time are you giving them to register?
Uh, so it's not defined in the bylaws, so what we did this past year is, uh, we gave them, we sent out the letter, gave them a thirty-day notice, and then we sent out another notice. Uh, so it would be at least forty-five days.
And it's a $300 a day fine?
Uh, so it could be. That's how the law's written. And we're reasonable people who would give it that $300 a day if his intention comply with the bylaws.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll post Article 14 for a vote. All those in favor, please press 1A, those opposed 2B. And we'll close the voting. Post the results. Ninety-five yes, twenty-seven no. The article has passed. Article 15. Motion made a second to dispense with the reading of the article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Unanimous vote. It's Town Administration.
Uh, before we made the motion, a little background on this. Uh, so the fee that we just approved in Article 14, if that is never paid, Article 15 will allow us to lean that against the property. Uh, so with that said, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made a seconded. Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Fin- Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Open it up for discussion. Hearing none, we'll put Article 15 to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Post the results. Ninety-three yes, nineteen no. Article 15 passes. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to allow the Board of Selectmen to discontinue a portion of the private way Heinrich Road between Lakeside Ave. and Cooper Road for MGL Chapter 82, Section 21, and release it to the four abutting property owners, or take any action thereto.
Mr. Moderator, uh, as a point of background, so this portion of Heinrich Road in the early 2000s was in-formally discontinued, uh, and traffic hasn't been traveling through there since then. Uh, what we'd like to do now is just make that formal and officially divide it amongst the four abutting property owners. So with that, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll put Article 16 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A, those opposed 2B. And we'll close the voting. Post the results. 116 yes, nineteen no. Article 16 is approved. Articles seventeen. Motion made a second to dispense with the reading of Article 17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. It's unanimous vote.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. I will, uh, allow the assistant petition list to come up and make the motion, but I will briefly give some background on it. Uh, so the property we're talking about is off of Thompson Road. Uh, so on these screenshots, you can see the area that we're talking about. Currently, it's a school bus parking lot. So allow this area to be opened up and included in our marijuana retail overlay dispensary.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Kajaski, 71, played it out. When the, uh, town meeting approved marijuana dispensaries, uh, at a previous town meeting, uh, the, there was action taken to develop zones that were going to be available for the dispensary. Uh, at the action of the, uh, Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, they declared that there were going to be two areas where they could be located. We felt that there's a, another area, uh, originally before marijuana was even discussed, uh, with regards to legalities, the town basically said that if there was going to be a, uh, a dispensary or any type of, of building uh, that was located for retail sales, whether it be from additional or recreational at some point, uh, it was going to be zoned originally in what they called the adult entertainment zone, which basically was located between, uh, Birch Island Road and Exit 1. Well, there's a, there's a facility that's located behind, uh, it's in the back of Thompson Road, behind 173. It's a thirty-by-one-hundred foot garage, uh, with approximately 150 parking spots that would be at what is considered a very attractive location for one of these, uh, facilities. So with that said, we have offered this articles to, uh, see if the town would be willing to, uh, create an overlay district so it'd be another zone can be created so that there can be another dispensary. Uh, there would be two that would be licenses that would be awarded in, in town, and, uh, we feel that this is an extremely attractive place and a, uh, a very good location. The building is owned by a town resident. Uh, we have talked to, uh, many of the town officials with regards to this and, uh, think it's going to be a facility that would generate an extremely amount of, uh, a large amount of revenue, and, uh, we feel it's going to be something that can be controlled, something that can be utilized in the best possible way. So with that said, I move that the article be approved.
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, this is, the address is 173 and 173 R Thompson Avenue.
The motion to approve? Motion to approve, we have a second? A second? Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, they, uh, you can get through the recommendations if you don't mind. Does the Selectmen have a recommendation?
The guard, the guide is actually, he's right, the Board of Selectmen recommended for right to the sponsor.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
The Planning Board did report, that was provided for you outside, the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. The Planning Board recommended not approve the article. At the previous town, town meeting where other zones were created, the overlay district was created, two different areas in town that would be available for, um, marijuana distribution. We feel that those two areas are sufficient. This area along Thompson Road is within several hundred yards of the high school practice field. It's really not a very good area. In the public hearings that we held with the Planning Board, um, we had issues with traffic, um, where we already have concerns at that area, uh, as well as the, uh, location with the high school and the other schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Herd. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting, I rudely did not introduce the two most important folks at our table, and that is Dr. Liz Bango, our superintendent, and Mrs. Moeen Grandal, our business manager. Uh, Dr. Gogan would like to share some of her concern related to this.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as a school superintendent, it's my obligation to, um, speak out against having a tailwind store near the schools. Um, we are a drug-free zone, and I do publicly want to say that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kajaski.
First of all, I don't, I don't believe that a four kid in your school, um, you know, that the, our high school or middle school are not really even close to the facility. Secondly, um, from a location standpoint, uh, the, uh, building is, cannot be seen on Thompson Road directly. It can be seen from Route 395, but it cannot be seen from Thompson Road directly. It does have easy access on and off the facility, uh, on and off the exit. It's approximately 100 yards or 120, somewhere between 100 and 120 yards, uh, from Exit 1. Uh, it would be the first exit coming from Connecticut into Massachusetts. Uh, we are spending, we do have a budget, uh, today that we'd like to approve, it's under over $4 million. This is one of the ways that we as a community can generate additional revenue. We are going to have two licenses, and one of them, uh, I think is, this is, this is an extremely attractive and good location for this facility. I also, again, believe that, and I don't know whether I stated it previously, but the building is owned by a local resident. Um, I, there's plenty of parking available. The operators of the facility, uh, would have a, an agreement to, uh, if, if again approved with the community, they do buy appointment only. I know that there is a specific concern of traffic. Uh, I know that, again, something that has been previously stated with regards to the lessed facility or any of the others around, the substantial amount of facilities that are opening, and, um, you're not going to have those type of backups on, uh, for all those, or other type of traffic that was, that occurred originally. And one that opens, the supply and demand will dictate that there are going to be less in terms of traffic, and it will be controlled in a pretty, I would think, in a very, very good manner. Uh, police would be, uh, local police would be hired to handle any type of traffic. The traffic study would have to be done by October, so with that said, I, I again ask for, uh, support on the issue, and, uh, I think it would be an excellent location for the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I?
Mrs. Gogan.
Under all due respect, I think the one concern that the school district has is there, there is a bus stop near that site, and, um, that would be a concern.
Mr. Herd.
Mr. Moderator, uh, taking Riverside Drive, I am although a member of the school committee at this time speaking as a citizen. Um, I understand that in our state marijuana is legal, and I strongly support any way that we can try to obtain additional revenue through the town. However, I do have a concern of this location as it relates to how many students will be driving by either in a school bus or own car, or walking or running past where this, uh, potential marijuana rental store will be located. Just so everyone's aware, the track, which unfortunately is not in the best shape, is right behind us. Oftentimes, kids in cross-country and track the field, the coaches will send them down, and I'm not from town, so I can't remember the name of the street.
Ozmo.
Ozmo, thank you. Ozmo Street, down to Thompson Road, and they will be running right past this particular store. Uh, so I just want everyone to be aware that although, folks may not think that it's physically close to where we're sitting right now, it is close to where a lot of the kids are going to be driving by or walking by on a regular basis. And so again, as a, as a citizen, I ask that we not pass this into the department.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Elaine Fitzback Davis, and I live at 267 Thompson Road. And while I, I think the town deserves the revenue, if you look at Thompson Road traffic right now, it is, as the French and the Russians say, a kashmar, a nightmare. Their traffic is terrible. It's supposed to be between 30 and 35 miles per hour, per hour. And it just, um, is terrible, and it can't be controlled yet. But once you add this place there, I think it's just gonna be worse. Come on.
Thank you.
Michael Lovell, State 5, Cleveland Ave. Um, just from a financial perspective, the budget that we did pass earlier already accounts for two licenses, so, uh, if we're not able to get this location and two in the current zone area, it would be down $75,000 per license. The budget for next fiscal year would account for the three percent, um, local excise tax that we do to generate from this location. Um, I know there's a lot of discussion up off of, um, traffic. Uh, the host agreement, I can speak to the town mayor's, would put in that it would be by appointment only. Worcester just opened up their first recreational facility two weeks ago. Um, they actually just went to the campus commission and got the appointment only restriction off because there was no increase in any sort of, uh, traffic in that area. All the places, all these stores have opened, the only two that had traffic issues have been the North Hampton and the Lester area because they were not by appointment only, and they were the first two in the state, so they were sort of just anomalies. Um, the other point I just want to point out is that the, uh, the company is trying to open this location, it's already in this town. Um, they've been a good... They've been a good tenant to the town, they're giving back to both the school and the town, so I just think that should also be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. I will give Mr. Kajadzki the final word. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leframlin.
Thank you, Paul Leframlin, he's two beats crossing, speaking as a citizen, not as a town board chair. We, from a financial perspective, we already have two zones already dedicated to marijuana distribution. There is no financial change that would happen because we already have facilities looking at both of these other areas, so we have two licenses, we already have two areas that are locked. This just adds another third one which really isn't needed. From a revenue perspective, you're going to get two licenses, two people are going to end up here eventually. All this does is just move something closer to the schools and into an area that's already trafficked, that already has traffic issues now. I know if people have been by there at three o'clock in the afternoon, but the traffic is already backed up to Wintiki from the light many, many times during the day. This is going to be a problem no matter what we do in development of that area. You already have problems with buses now. I just don't understand why this, why this location would be a good one, other than for the proponent of the article. It doesn't do anything for the town because you already wanted to get the revenue from the other locations that we approved in the last meeting. There's no reason to approve this one. Thank you.
And again, Mr. Kajadzki allow you two minutes to-
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With that said and with what's been said in opposition, I would like to make a strong point that this facility cannot be seen on Thompson Road. One of the facilities that, when the chairman of the school committee, the superintendent talked about, the students going by, they do, when they do cross Thompson Road visibly, they will not be able to see this, yet they can see a pine shop and a strip joint, which is a fact. And I don't know why you don't have an exception with that. And at least again, I don't think the revenues that come from either one of those two places anywhere close to this. The marijuana facility, the original plot of those people who were involved in town government, the marijuana facilities were being suggested, was that going to be in the adult entertainment zone. The students are not going to be able to see it, it's behind. You've got houses in the front, you've got the person that's going to be selling cars or whatever that's being used around there and so forth. And I know that, I just, I just really feel like we can capitalize on generating additional revenues with a location as such, and I ask that you support this. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank all the speakers for stating their reasons for support or not support of this article. At this time, we will put it to-
It's a two-thirds vote.
It is a two-thirds vote, it's a kind of a state thing. It is a two-thirds vote and we will open the voting. All those in favor of the article, that's one A, those opposed, two B. Close the voting. Sixty-six yes, seventy-four no, forty-seven percent vote yes, and the article does not Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend part A, part I, appointments by board of selectmen or moderator on article fourteen dash two by deleting the text shown with the-
Motion to dispense with the reading of the article?
Motion and second to dispense with the reading of article eighteen, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
And so the text is available in the town meeting guide as a brief summary. This creates a water sewer commission rather than just a water sewer advisory committee. It gives them the powers that are specified in MGL chapter forty and forty-one. They can oversee and facilitate the construction capital improvements, propose articles for town meeting, execute agreements, create policies, rules and regulations, grant water and sewer vacancies, recommend an annual budget, recommend staffing models and compensation. With that, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the article. All those in favor, vote one A, those opposed, two B. And we will close the voting and post the results. One hundred yes, sixteen no. Article passes. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to amend town bylaw chapter three thirteen by-
Motion to dispense with the reading of the article?
Motion and second to dispense with the reading of article nineteen, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Mr. Town Minister.
As a brief summary, so this will allow us to update our animal control regulations. It's been a while, over ten years since they have been updated. So this requires addresses, well, it addresses residents' kennels, so you, I'm sorry, you can't have more than three dogs at any residence. It also requires all dogs to be vaccinated for rabies. Any animals picked up by the animal control officer can receive medical care, which will have to be reimbursed by the owner. And it brings fines and fees more high in today's typical fees. So I recommend that the town vote to approve the articles as presented in the town meeting guide with one amendment, section three one three dash one licensing. It has the date on or before April thirtieth. That's what it currently says in our bylaw, but we actually do it later in the year, so I would amend it to August first.
Motion made and seconded. With the recommended date, does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends approval.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommends approval of the amendment.
Open it up for discussion.
Chris Chilton, twenty-seven Ogle Street, section three thirteen dash eleven, the bishop, old bishop. Says any dog, does that include service and support animals? Did you say any?
You're right. If you'd like to, I propose an amendment that that be changed to any non-service animal.
I'd like to make a motion that any dog can be approved, or any dog except for service and support.
Could you just restate the amended language, please?
Any dog from, except service and support.
Service and support.
Right, opposed to the area.
Motion and second on the amendment. Any other discussion?
Another question, then, we would need to define a service or support dog because it seems like everyone thinks they have a service dog nowadays. So is there some kind of registration of your dog to be a service dog and somebody approving that it's actually a service dog?
Do, Mr. Gogan, I need your answer. Do service dogs have to be registered with the state?
Traditionally, we need to get a approval from your physician that you need it, which is a big one. And then there are different organizations you could register with. I don't even know what they are off the top of my head, but-
I don't have a good answer. I'll tell you.
I'll rescind the motion if it's any easier and change to not make a motion that says registered support and service animals that help so the town or the animal control officer would be able to ask them for approval.
May I, may I make a recommendation through town council? We could identify these support dogs in the language that would say any support, service or support dogs within the meaning of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Was there a motion to accept? Motion to accept and seconded. Any other discussion on the amended language to section three thirteen eleven A? We'll vote on that amended language. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Go back to the original article, is there any other discussion on article nineteen? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of article nineteen, one A, those opposed, two B.
Article nineteen as amended.
As amended. Thank you very much. And we'll close the voting, post the results. One oh two, yes, thirteen, no. Article is passed. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster Waterways and Boating, Lake Rules and Regulations Bylaws, Chapter six thirty-five by rescinding section sixty-three dash thirty-three point five as follows or take any action thereon. Mr. Town Minister.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, after meeting with the public safety officials, including the police chief and the harbor master, I'm going to propose that we pass over this article for more information. Our feeling was that this article has only been in place for a year, or this existing bylaw's only been placed for a year. If we give it another year, it might make a difference. Anecdotally, we've heard that it has lessened the problem on North Pond, but created a more significant problem on South Pond, but we're going to try to address those through other means and enforcement mechanisms, so we will hold off on this. That is my motion to hold off for more.
We have a motion and a second to pass over for more information. Any other discussion? We will open the voting. Oh, sorry, recommendation by the board of selectmen? No.
Board of selectmen, we read this article this evening at our meeting, and we voted to recommend passing over for more information.
Finance committee have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Finance committee recommended approval of the original article, but at the time of our meeting prior, there was no indication that this might have passed over.
Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more.
Steve Ramon Lakeside Ave. Just to make a point, there is a boat ramp on Lakeside Ave that's operated by the state. So by denying personal rock watercraft from Memorial Beach, one, the town's losing revenue. Two, you're also increasing traffic to Lakeside Ave. I don't know if any of you have ever been down Lakeside Ave on a warm sunny summer day. It is jam-packed down by the boat ramp. I'm not that close to the boat ramp, but they go right by my house. And that's all revenue that the town is losing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, to that point, it did, in the past year, the revenues from the beach were approximately twenty thousand dollars less than they were previously. It's difficult to say that it's all because of the jet ski bylaw or personal watercraft, but there's certainly some correlation.
Hi, Angelo Spitzer, it's one on Lakeside Ave, right next to the beach, and we see a lot more traffic since Memorial Beach closed. In addition, the Lakeside ramp is much further away from the police station and there's a lot less controlling of Lakeside and also it is remote, so people feel easier to drink and go in the jet skis intoxicated. If you look at the disposal barrels on Lakeside Ave by the ramp, they're full of white cars and any other vehicles. In addition, the buoy system there is insufficient and the jet skis create weight that move the buoy system and make it so people come right to the beach. And residents there find that the beach becomes harder for them to use because jet skiers use it as a launching facility and their families come there and they, they're in and out all day where the ramp's purpose was to launch and enjoy the lake and make it out. So it would be, for us residents of Lakeside, a more appropriate situation if Memorial Beach accept the jet skis. You have closer access to the police station, a much more public area, it's not as private, and it's not next to residents.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We're on top early, forty-nine week filled out, you've had highway superintendent.
Many years ago, probably in nineteen ninety-eight, the board of selectmen voted to put no parking signs along both sides of the road from, from the street before it all the way around the park. So that, most of the signs are gone right now. And we, I lived at the lake for thirty-five to forty years and we always used that spot, you know, for children's, go swimming and whatever. But I think you've, the beach has lost a lot of revenue because they upped their rates and if the state takes it over, they're going to, they're going to drop the rates and we're going to have the same problems as we had in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight. So I just want some people to consider that. You're talking about budgets. The lake, the beach makes money for the town to do whatever they need to do at the beach. So we have to look at both scenarios here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. As the police chief, I know that Lakeside is always been congested with a lot of traffic with the boats and whatnot. We had some staffing issues last year. We were bare bones. We only had really one or two officers working the boat. We're going to change that this year. We're going to have, hopefully, that'll be, have the police force to clear the surplus. We're going to have two officers per boat would be out there aggressively enforcing all those infractions that we talked about, as well as monitoring the Lakeside area. And I would encourage, if you see people down there drinking and whatnot, call us, please. Obviously, when they see the black and white come down, it's not going to be as obvious to them as it is when we're on this. So please call us and talk to yourself with our enforcement staff on that.
Catherine Moore, the Holden Street. Because of the discussion, I have lost track of what the motion is.
Sure.
If it's as on the screen, then I'm looking differently than what I understand the motion to be.
Let me just clarify, the motion on the floor right now is to pass over this article for more information. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator?
You're the moderator.
Thank you for reminding.
You are new to your own.
And I just want to clarify, it is pass over for more information, which has a different role.
Yeah, so we'd like to look at it over the summer and- Yeah, so we'd like to look at it over the summer, and it's possible that we could come back in October with a different recommendation.
Ms. Ben.
Through the moderator, to the police chief, there has been a lot of discussion on several of the social media forums about the situation with the parking down on Lakeside. And it seems to be the opinion that there is significant areas of no parking allowed, but people are parking there anyway. So in addition to patrolling the lake, I would be interested in knowing whether you plan to ticket or tow cars that are parked in no parking areas.
Yes, to answer your question. That was when I talked about enforcing more down Lakeside, that's one of the things, is to go down there and enforce, because they're all parking ticket. So that also generates revenue for the town as well.
Yeah, so presuming that there was never an order to take them down, yes, we can put them back up.
Jeff Hall from Gilms Street. I've lived there a little bit, a couple of years now, and I haven't seen any problems at the beach as far as intoxication. I've seen people having occasional beers. I don't see anybody coming out of the lake or going into the lake totally intoxicated. And from what I've experienced, I've seen a lot of the jet skis coming and going, but ninety-nine, ninety-five percent of them, ninety-nine percent of them are pretty courteous. They don't go making waves or anything like that. And I think it would be a big disservice to the homeowners who do have boats, who do access that boat ramp, that do contribute a lot of tax dollars, and that's one thing that makes their property more attractive, is the accessibility to that boat ramp. So I don't think that putting it down would be...
Right, yeah. Just to be clear, though, we're not discussing closing or modifying anything to Lakeside. This would just be to allow personal autograph to launch from Memorial Beach or not?
And how would you provide, how would you stop them from launching?
So at Memorial Beach, it's banned, so when it's staffed, we would allow it.
But if, over on Lakeside, if you were to stop the personal watercraft from launching, you would prohibit the boats from launching too, right?
So we don't have the ability to regulate what's launched from Lakeside. So as, since it's state-operated, I would assume that they would continue to allow boats and jet skis to launch.
George Worthy, you have your own appointment, like the call for the question, please? The call for the question has been requested. Is there a second? This will take a two-thirds vote on the call of the question.
Do you want, I can add that word, or do you want to do it as a voice call?
I'll do it as a voice call, so the audience will allow. All those in favor to move the question at this time, signify by saying aye. It's unanimous. We'll now take a vote on the motion to pass over Article twenty for more information. Yes.
Just a point of order for the audience, can you please explain what happens if this is defeated?
If this is defeated, we refer back to the original article. Okay, let's open the voting. All those in favor to pass over for more information, press 1A. Those opposed, 2B. Voting is open. We'll close the vote, voting, and post the results. One hundred, yes; twenty-three, no. The article is passed over for more information. Article twenty-one. Delete bylaw twenty-five thirteen in its entirety and replace with... Motion and second to dispense with the reading of the article. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Town honor.
I move the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve as presented. Does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any other discussion? All those, check that, we're going to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-one, press 1A. Okay, we'll close the voting, post the results. Ninety-five, yes; seven, no. The article is passed. Article twenty-two. Reduce the number of bylaw committee members from seven to five, deleting the word seven in the first sentence and replacing it with the word five, or take any action thereon.
I move the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Open it up for discussion. Any discussion on Article twenty-two? If not, we will open up for voting. All those in favor of Article twenty-two, press 1A. Those opposed, press 2B. And we will close the voting. Ninety-four, yes; seven, no. The article passes. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to amend town bylaws by deleting the text shown with a strike through and inserting the text shown in italics in the twenty-nineteen revised town bylaws as available on the town's website and handout at the town meeting, held on May thirteenth, twenty-nineteen, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, just to be clear, that there was a handout, and all proposed changes to the bylaws deserve the administrative bylaws only, and I believe the bylaw may be reviewed with regulatory bylaws for a future town meeting. I move that the town vote to approve the articles as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will hold the vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-three, press 1A. And we will close the voting, post the results. Eighty, yes; seven, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Another page. Article twenty-four. Motion to dispense and second with the reading of the article. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve as presented. It's all available in the Town Meeting Guide.
Motion made and seconded. Does the selectman have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Hearing none, we will hold the vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-four, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. And we will close the vote, post the results. Seventy-seven, yes; five, no. The article passes. Now I want the town motion to dissolve. Seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Please turn in your remotes on your way out.